Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
We're gonna have Mike Johnson join us in a few minutes on a matter that is on the agenda today. First on the agenda is, uh, Ms. Willie Fox. Her concerns are with the Hamilton Solins House. Ms. Willie, I'm gonna let you talk because I'm choking up. Uh, and tell us kind of what you're thinking and, and, and what, how we might fit in the scheme of things here, okay?
Well, of course, the Hamilton Solins House, we're hoping eventually that that will be a museum. And, you know, that's what Winfield is doing with the old Citizens Bank building that they have just recently got. And, uh, and we're talking about, we'll, we'll need a security system. Uh, we've been offered a piano that belonged to Ms. Penny Long. And, and, uh, uh, and we've afraid to put much of anything in there and whatever without having some security. Uh, I have contacted the SEM Security at Winfield. And Pete Ganey is, owns that.
Owns it.
Okay, and he talked about, um, a minimum of motion detectors on the four doors would be, uh, two hundred dollars and an outside sign. And he said, and a, uh, a hundred dollars for, uh, a communication deal. And, uh, and a keypad, of course, outside sign. And the monthly cost would be thirty-seven ninety a month for three years. After that, it's thirty-two ninety. And he's, and I told him what we had in mind to do. And, and I mentioned the piano. And he said, well, you know, you can put a sensor on that piano and if it's moved, it'll set the alarm off. I hadn't even thought about that. Didn't know it, didn't know it. And, uh, then Tracy Hawkins had mentioned about, uh, doing cameras. They would be a hundred dollars each. And then a motion system inside. And of course, the recorder on that motion system is about five hundred dollars. But, uh, that's, that's not gonna set off any alarm deal. And that, that camera business outside is good to a point. But I know what happened to us in an instance and whatever. We could see what was going on and what they were doing and all of that. But it was dark and you couldn't tell who it was. So I'm just saying that they're good to a point. But we'd like to have, uh, more than just the camera systems, is what I'm saying. And I contacted, uh, Simply Safe on, I didn't contact, I pulled it up on the computer and checked with them. And, uh, they have all kinds of systems, anywhere from two to three to four hundred dollars, the cost. Nope, and some have contract and some don't have a contract. And they, I saw one, it's fourteen ninety-nine a month for theirs. And that is wireless. And, uh, so anyway, we'd just like to know if we can pursue this to, if y'all would, you know, do a security system for us and whatever. And let us just pursue this and see where the best deal would be and, and what we really need for what we're doing. Now, Mr. Ganey mentioned about, uh, he said you could always add to it. So we wouldn't have to start out with everything, is what I'm saying. And that's why he mentioned the four doors. And, uh, and he talked about, uh, motion, uh, motion deals on the inside. And, and he said, in each room, well, but he, I said, why would you not put that in the hall? When they're first coming in at each end of the house? He said, it's like, it's up here and it's looking at you and you're walking to it. Not near as effective as if you're going crossways. And he said, if you put them in the rooms on the sides, they're gonna go into the rooms. And, and which would be a crossways to the cameras, is what I'm saying. And he said, it's much more effective. I never had, didn't know that, whatnot, but we discussed that.
Was you thinking that if someone intruded, you'd want an alarm sounded at that point?
Yes, I, I do, I do.
It seems like that would be the best benefit to me is, is something that set off, or triggered an alarm.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And brought the lawmen down.
Yes.
Well, now, back on, at the March fourteenth work session when y'all were here before, my notes say that the Historical Society is paying for the security system. And then there was a list of three or four other things that the Historical Society was gonna pay for. So have y'all changed your mind and you're wanting the city to do the security system? Or what's happened since that?
I was told to come and see if y'all would do the security system. I di- I didn't know about that. I wasn't.
Oh, the meeting March the fourteenth, uh, I've got several notes here. And one of them is, um, Historical Society's paying for the security system. The GFIC outlets, the mirrors, the faucets, the knobs.
I knew the GFI stuff was. And the outlets, the faucets and, and all of that. And I, I was aware of that. I remember that. I didn't remember the security system.
That was the first thing that I have written down.
Okay.
So, uh, so there's been a change or?
Well.
Where's your money gonna come from to pay for all that stuff that you're paying?
We s- we sell books. Those books, we're still selling on those. And, and, uh, our dues and donations. And we don't.
I just wondered because I didn't know you had any in my list.
We don't have a lot. We don't have a lot. And we've still got some things to do to the house that she mentioned, some of it right there, that, that we're gonna use the money for. Like you said, some changing outs and plugs and, and, uh, I believed, and they mentioned about the outside lights and whatnot, that they were gonna, uh, you know, as it is, they've got them sitting on the ground out there. They're gonna do some in-ground plugs or something to that effect. I know that was one thing I remember I'm talking about.
Those spotlight bulbs don't last very long, uh, as they are because they're just not designed for that exterior work. I mean, exterior lighting. Um, I was in the house today.
Today.
And one of the sticks that holds the windows shut was in the floor. As though someone had been messing with the, the window, uh, in the front room. Uh, and I put it back before I left there, but it was laying down in the floor.
Did you turn it crossways or stand it up?
I stood it up. And, and it's like, I put it just like the others were that were in the windows.
I just, to me, I just think if they're crossways, they can't mess with the window and make it fall out. I mean, that's my thinking. I don't know.
I don't know if those are cut long enough to go diagonal and do with it. I, I think it has to stand up.
Okay, okay.
Won't fat, keep that. Uh, but anyway, um, I sensed that maybe somebody had messed with one of those windows already today. I didn't see anything of sorts, but I'm almost sure somebody attempted to get in or did get in.
What, what do you think's the safest thing was to do to keep it safe? The alarm system?
Yes, yes.
But.
And it, and do, do a minimum to start with. And it's like he said, once you start adding things in the house, it would be of value and whatnot particularly. Uh, then you can always add other.
Things.
Things to it, yes.
So I'm guessing we haven't, as the city, we haven't done any of our part of this list?
I don't believe any of it's really been done. We've got some additional work we need to do now. The plumbing and the outdoor toilets is, is broke pretty bad. We're gonna have to replumbed.
Well, the only time you're gonna be able to use outdoor toilets is gonna be in the summertime. Because it'd freeze up in the wintertime unless you're gonna put some heat on it. We couldn't keep heat on them all the time.
Why can't you put a, why can't you put a drain plug and whatnot in the fall of the year? Drain them and that's it.
They won't bust if they don't have water in them.
No, but I, I'm saying we couldn't have, we, you, only time you couldn't use them in the winter because they'd have to be, the water'd have to be drained back.
Just turn, have to be turned back on. Drain it in the fall, it's like I do.
Yeah.
My, my, you know, going up on the deck. I drain it and whatnot, turn it off down here and whatnot. And that's, that's, that's okay up there.
Yeah, but you'd just have to leave it off for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You couldn't use it in the wintertime.
Well, that's true too. But you're, in the wintertime, you're not gonna be using it a lot. And we do plan to, of course, don't plan to have an open house. This, because we had one in, back in October, I think. But, uh, at Oktoberfest or whatever, we had open house then. And of course, we had to get a porta potty put out there and did. And, uh, but we don't plan to have one Christmas, is what I'm saying. But there will be some, what, tree and all of that done.
You know, that's gonna be a big job for the city to look after it and pay the bill, pay for what you're, some of the things you're speaking of. Would it not be easier that y'all would get together and find out what it's gonna cost you to operate it, say, per month? And y'all getting money for other things to pay for all of that yourself? And let us just donate so much to it each month? Instead of us being responsible for it or anything, since y'all are gonna be responsible for it, I guess.
Well, now, in March, my notes say that y'all have no desire to run it. As far as, and, and, and everything was pretty much coming back to the city. Is that still?
Well, what we talked about was there's just so few people and whatnot, and they're all like me. They're older and whatever, that, who you're gonna get to do it. Now, we will man it and whatnot when we have open house. As far as, you know, certain things. But if, if it's ready to do some other things, uh, I don't know that we would have the manpower there to, to do that. But, uh, but we, of course, not gonna give up on our, as far as our interest in it. Because we're still interested in furnishing it with, with period.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to, and you're gonna have to have some alarm systems and things when you put, what you're gonna put in there, yes. But what I was trying to do was keep the city away from it and just donate the money. Let y'all have whoever in, operate it.
The way we want to? Is that what, is that what you're saying, the way we want to operate?
That's me, because the city's gonna get more than nothing.
As far as going and doing things, doing things.
Having anything to do with it, y'all would be operating it, your group. You'd be in charge of it and we'd just donate so much each month. Like you got other people donating.
Uh-huh.
We'd donate so much each month to it and y'all handling it.
But I think the catch there is all this list has to be done for it to be up to code. Uh, the railing and the ramps have to be built to specifications. Uh, the back steps have to be moved, the spindles and the wood and all this. And the, I mean, there's a whole list of stuff that has.
Yeah, now, we're gonna have to do that. But I'm talking about when we get through with it and get ready for it to start operating. The city don't have anybody that can, I don't see, that can look after it.
Give me that list of the things that you're saying that the city's gonna do right there.
Oh, this was just a, there was a printed list and I thought I had, these are just my notes.
You understand what I'm saying?
I see what, I see where they're coming from.
And we'd just put the money.
Oh, thank God.
Heaven's with the list.
We had a printed list. Mr. Moore gave a printed list. These are just notes that I made when he read off his list. There's a whole printed sheet of paper.
Well, some of those things that we are gonna do because we discussed the fact that we've got the money to do it with. So, I don't know, like you're talking about, I believe it was like spindles and whatnot, faucets and, and plug-ins and kitchen.
Yeah, I just, the outlets, the mirrors, the faucets and some kind of knobs.
Mirrors you've been taking care of.
Were what was on this list. But as far as the, the major things, the handrails, the steps, the underground wiring, uh, all these other things were gonna be back on the city. And then, uh, there were some notes about the fire code and, and different things and, and thresholds and, but there is a printed list.
You're saying that Bob had one?
I had one. I, I'll have to dig it out. I'll find it. I don't throw anything away. I've got it in one of my stacks.
I don't know. It's not with, it's not with my notes. But he was reading off a sheet of paper the day that he was here and I was trying to write things down. And then finally, we got a copy of the sheet of paper. So, but I don't know whether the sheet of paper is.
I've got one of those. I keep my hands on it instantly, but I've got one. I'll find it.
But I, I just think if we could come up with a, uh, number, a dollar number, that the city gives to that group each month. Because what's gonna happen two more years or whatever it is, this bunch is gonna be gone. There's gonna be another bunch in here. And y'all are gonna, whoever your group is will be turning, they'll be knowing what's going on and so on and so forth. I, I just believe it'd be better if we donated the money for y'all to operate it. What do y'all think about it? I mean.
I, I don't, the logistics of it, I guess the city holds a deed to the property.
They do.
All right, and then I guess we pay the insurance on the property.
And you do, sure.
So they just need to get a committee together and say, you know, if we have this much money from the city.
To go with whatever they've got, see?
Yeah. That we could operate going forward in the city's building.
Right.
Uh, and.
Cause I don't, I don't believe the city can operate.
Your concept, Jean, I, I don't discount it at all, as long as it works.
Yeah.
You know.
For them.
Why don't I, why don't we, maybe by next month and whatnot, see what's been done between now and then? See what the society has done? See what y'all have done? See what there's left to do? And then come up with a figure as far as the maintaining.
Yeah. I walked up that back ramp today and, uh, there's some, already some deterioration of the woods.
The back ramp, that's coming up anyway. We know that. That's not the code. And we knew that at the time.
Yeah.
But we had to do something in order to have an open house. But it's such a minor thing and whatnot. I'm just saying that, that, oh, yeah. I'm, we're aware of that, of that. And we're aware of the spindles. We didn't.
By another few months, it might not be, it's safe to use.
I understand that. It was, I don't think the kind of wood was used on those spindles that should have been used. Or they would not have deteriorated this quick.
Yeah, it probably wasn't properly treated for outdoor use.
We've discussed that.
But anyway.
There's a place up there on the fascia and whatnot.
It was a pretty thorough list that was worked out and I, I've got a copy of it somewhere. I'll find it.
I think she's making.
No.
You don't make her? I thought you were making her.
No, those are just my notes. There's a whole printed sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't worry. But I don't, I don't say that we don't need a security system on that. If we're gonna put those items, nice items in there that people are willing to donate, we need to make sure that they stay there.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have to have security.
Well.
That's not what, what I'm saying is, is the operation of it, you know, we don't have.
Well, with the operation, or what, we're talking about power bills and the water bills, which is minimum, back minimum anyway. I mean, because it's not, not used that, that much.
Power bills.
But, uh, if we had, uh, of course, the power bill is just whatever is, uh, well, it's just those, the lights and whatnot that's, would be put up during Christmas and, and, uh, when we have open house, which is, what is the minimum power bill?
Well, there was a couple of times it was astronomical. I don't know if somebody had left the heater, air on or, it was, it was pretty salty.
Really?
Yes, yeah, because I don't know if we, Amy's the one that brought it to our attention when we was paying the bills. And she said, why is it so much?
Well, was that back when they were doing some work out there and maybe running power solves or something? Or has it been in the last year?
It's been within the last year, I believe. I'd have to double check.
Well, that needs to be checked out. I agree because there was, there's no reason for it to have been that.
Uh, the little clipping or brochure or, or thing that Bob had on the security system was, was real reasonable. I mean, I remember that. It, it wasn't very much at all per month. I don't know how, and how inclusive the system was, but the security system he showed us was lots less than the thirty-seven ninety a month.
Uh-huh. I don't know who it was with. I didn't know that, that had been discussed. If that be the case, I don't know why they wanted me to come today.
But, but I don't, that may have been a special that was running right then. And I don't know, it may not be available at that price today.
You mentioned the company, was the company he mentioned, one of those.
SEM?
It was a thing on.
At Winfield, uh, the ADT was here.
Simply Safe, is that what you said? Was it Simply Safe, is that?
Yeah, Simply Safe. That's one I pulled up on the computer today and, and was reading about. And as I said, had, they just got numerous, um, variations, of course. And you can add to and take from and whatever. But once I looked at, not necessarily a contract, no contract, um, Simply Safe.
Well, actually, the next thing you gotta do is get it finished, didn't?
Yeah, this has been like seven years.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's, it's been a long drug-out thing.
That's what you said when we started here, you know, that it'd been seven years, I believe, that it's been working on.
It happened, it happened in eleven, January of eleven. Well, we've still got.
There's parts of the house today that look really good. There's a few things that need to be done, but there's, uh, the house is old, looks in order, I mean, pretty much.
When that tree is put up on that second, that little porch at the top there, I don't know what that's called. And those lights are on that at Christmas time and that decoration outside. You can see it when you're coming into Hamilton from the north side. Dr. Welborn told me that he stopped and went, looked at it and made some pictures of it and commented to me about it. Everybody knows Dr. Welborn and most of children. And, uh, oh, yeah, and he was complimenting on the fact that it had been saved and that sort of thing. And then some doctor from down in Mississippi, uh, passing through, sent us a check. It's got, evidently got the address off of that sign. And, uh, yeah, so I'm just saying, people do notice.
The sign says, help us preserve this treasure.
That's right.
You know, and that, and people like to see things like that done.
Well, you, you know, the mail's gone, the old jail is gone. Uh, our tower, tower, clock tower to the courthouse is gone. Our tis and whale's gone. What's left? This is about the oldest thing that we've got now.
Well, Willie, I think, really, personally me, I, I think y'all just need to tell us what you want us to do. And then, what do we need to do now? You know, we're.
Well, I just talked about, I was just told we'd talk about this right here today and whatnot, so.
And think about, yeah, what I was talking about.
As I said, we'll see what we can get done and see what y'all get done and whatnot in the next month and what there is left to do. And, uh, and we'll be back.
I, I guess we just want permission to get the system installed. At whatever best price or whatever, is it?
Well, well, that's true too. It's got to be permission to put it in because it belongs to the city. As far as that part goes. But now she's saying that according to that last meeting and whatnot, we were supposed to pay for it and whatnot. So I didn't understand that. So as I said, we're gonna have to clear up some things. My opinion.
Well, that's what she said, what she's got up down here is what we were told at the, on the meeting after we've had.
And, and I don't understand all my notes because it, this says Historical Society bowing out, but requests it not be sold. And then it says family gave money back to the city.
They did.
So.
They did. Three or four of them and whatnot. Bob, Jean, you weren't you one of them?
Me, me and Susie Jo and Marlene. Uh, Marlene and Jim Palace.
The money that they got out of that, they donated it back to the city to spend on that house. So I'm just saying, and then for, it's not preserved and not used or whatnot, but not very good.
So is that the money that's been spent on it thus far?
I don't know.
I'm sure it probably is.
Do we know how much of that money's left?
No, not without researching because I believe that account was, there was an account for the Hamilton Solins.
I don't know how the city set that up.
And I think we, that's been closed. That was closed before I took that position, so.
Maybe two councils were covered, I'm sure. So actually, we know nothing about it, except what whoever gave us the paper the other day. So we're gonna have to work from there. And I'm sure all of us are certainly gonna be willing to go ahead and finish it up, you know?
Okay.
Isn't that right, Mayor, probably?
I, I believe that kinda covers it.
We don't have any choice now except to finish it up.
Well, I, I believe we're, you know, obligated to, to get it in good shape. And we gotta figure a way to, uh, not let things like the pipes freeze and things like that. That's just repetitive stuff that we're having to do.
Whoever did that installation out there should have put a drain pipe, a drain plug and whatnot in that. And that would have taken care of it. I don't understand anybody that's doing plumbing would do it without doing that.
You can liberalize it, you know?
I don't, I don't get that. I know better than that. And I'm a woman.
Well. I promise you. I'm a man and I don't know a lot about that stuff.
Supervision sometimes.
Specifications, specifications.
Um, it's just, if supervision says put that drain in there, then they install it. If someone don't say put that drain in there, that don't get done sometimes. And it's just the way it is.
It must not have window locks on it either.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
The sticks is all, is there to keep anybody from breaking in.
Stick won't get it. Well, it'd be pretty easy if you get the window locks, like told Sam. Knock that one pane out and it's in there and I'm like.
That's exactly what I thought about. And whatnot, that I just, I just about as soon have, if that stick now, I like them going this way. That way you can shake that one and it won't fall out and whatnot. You're going straight up and down like they are now and whatnot, of course.
They're straight up and down.
I know.
Because it looks better than.
Oh, I know it looks better, yeah.
It don't show.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. But, yeah, and that's just, anyway, we'll, I'll check on that list. And we'll have us another meeting and we'll see what we're gonna get done.
Come back, tell us what you want us to do.
And next, next meeting, we'll be here.
I think it's real key to have, uh, someone assigned to make sure that things don't happen that, you know, happen. And, and we somehow, the plumbing. we somehow, the plumbing happened, the plumbing problems happened, and I mean, when y'all were having your October open house, Mike said, let me tell you about the plumbing out there, it's all pieces. He said, we turned it on to use these restrooms today and water went everywhere.
Oh, in the, in the.
In the bathrooms.
Outside building.
Yeah, under that.
Yeah, that was a mess from the get-go. They built the foundation and then they couldn't get the house, the little building on top of the foundation, didn't have a way of getting lifting it and putting it on there. Didn't put any plumbing in it prior to setting the house on there, and they had to cut the floor out, put the plumbing in. It was just a mess from the start. Tammy was sick, I guess remembers that.
I remember.
Open any of the trouble site, it's still waiting, putting her out.
I'll see you after the meeting.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna work with y'all, Miss Willie. Uh, it, it's a matter of just coming to an agreement on things, and, you know, we know that the house belongs to the city and we must maintain it. It's, it's not a house that we're gonna let fall down. We're gonna keep it, uh, maintained, and, and, uh, sometimes our getting to it is a little slow, but our intentions are all good.
Well, you know, getting to it, it's pretty slow, I know that.
We understand, we understand.
I mean, ele- uh, since two thousand eleven, that's, and it's not completed yet. I think that's pretty slow.
Right. I think we did well.
It's put on the back burner, that's for sure.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of it's been coordination more, more than the effort itself, and, and, um, when someone doesn't really understand about ADA compliance and things like that, and, and try to go with a job and, and do a job, but not really have the right information at hand and the right people informed that were doing the work, uh, it don't just turn out to go right every time, and so we gotta make sure that the effort is a worthy effort, done in compliance with rules and regulation, and, uh, I think, I think it's, like you say, it has not been prioritized. We're, we're not gonna sit here and say it has been. If it's prioritized, it would have been done years ago.
Yes.
Uh, but maybe we can come together on this, and, and I'm, I'm thinking we can.
Well, you're never gonna get it done if you don't hire somebody to go see that the things are done and be responsible for having it done, cause we're not gonna be responsible for having it done. And that's what's been wrong. Nobody has been responsible to go do it. If you're gonna go ahead and finish it, you're gonna have to hire somebody and them get their help and go finish it, from whatever. You'll never get it done if you don't, you know. Somebody's got to be responsible, is what I'm saying.
I see.
If it belongs to the city, we're gonna have to take care of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
I think that was part of the problem in, in the past, that we hired, or they hired somebody to go do it, and then there was nobody to follow up to make sure it was done right. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And did, they, they did the job and then they got paid.
Got paid. We need, if you're gonna, we're gonna hire somebody to go do it, we shouldn't pay them till it, it's inspected and approved.
Exactly.
Let that be known when whoever you get to do it, that that's what it's gonna be. The money will be paid when his job is done.
To our satisfaction.
That's right. Cause we're, we can't, we, you know, we're like. And if, if we don't do something like that, Mayor, it'd be the same thing with the next administration coming in, it'll be eleven years instead of seven.
Yep, it's already been a long time, and, uh, we, we are gonna apologize to you today. We're gonna try and make sure that this gets done. We need a few more facts on the table to work forward, Miss Willie, and we'd like to know that, an approximate budget on this house per month, because, you know, what it's gonna take to operate it, maintain it, and also, um, we need to know if we're talking about just an alarm security system, if we're talking about cameras and sensors. It gets more involved, you know, you can get a set of alarms that are reasonable and the, and the price not is reasonable, or you can beef it up and you got a big bill to pay.
I, I understand that.
And, and so we need to see exactly what we can get to make sure that it secures the items inside the house. Intrusion is a big thing. I believe that intrusion alarms is, is a big thing that we're talking about here, and, um, some of the things are, are pretty good. The marked parking and, and the way it's laid out, it's not adequate parking, but it's marked properly. I think we're, we're okay on compliance there. It's around the house, our ramps and our other things, our underground wiring to, so we can have proper spotlights on the house to showcase it. Those things need to be done in short order.
Ramp, we even whatnot from the beginning, but, but, don't do that, yeah.
And the bathrooms need to be fixed properly, where they'd be winterized. So I can think of several things that really need to be done, and, uh, I'll just promise you more effort then put forward from my desk on this, and I'd like to have a few more facts from you guys about it, so that we can make a, a good decision when we make one. We don't vote on anything at these meetings, but we have, it's brainstorming today, but it, this is a worthy effort. It's a good place to start. We'll take care of it in an official meeting, but, uh, we need, we need enough information to go forward with it, and as Jean says, a lot of us don't know a lot about what we need there, and, and I think that is one of the hindrances. Uh, Bob's list was pretty inclusive, and I'm gonna dig it out, uh, and I think there's a few things we'll have to add to that list, especially now that we know there's problems in the bathrooms and things like this, but, um.
I, I, Bob, I, I, I still think that you need to get somebody to be over the whole thing and get it done.
We can't afford to pay a man.
Well, we may have to pay somebody. It's gotta be done. We, we'll never get it done if we don't. We, just get somebody to go down there and fix this.
Oh, I know what you're saying about that. I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we need somebody to be over that thing and, and make sure everything is fixed, you know, do it. If we don't, it'd be, you'll be back here another two years with the next bunch in here.
Well, I just, I mean, this is my personal feeling. The, the city owns it, and I think the city should be the one responsible for the, oh, security system.
Well, the security system, we're not worried about.
And, and the other bills. But, I mean, they, uh, the water and so on. I mean, they, they're the ones owning, and we don't, we have no way of making
utilities.
Yes, money to pay all of that.
Well, right now, that's not, I don't, I don't know how they feel about it, but I have no objection to the city paying the bills. But the thing we're understanding right now is getting it to where there be something to pay. The building finished, is what I'm talking about.
We would just like to get it where we can open it up and be, be proud of it and.
That's what I'm speaking of. Yeah, well, you're a long ways from it, from what I understand, and that's what I'm trying to get over to you is this. Get that finished first, then we'll come back and talk about keeping it up, cause you're gonna make some money there, probably, if you're gonna charge for people going in. I don't know what your plans are, but we've got to get the building ready now.
Gee, I don't think there's any major things to be done.
Well.
I'm saying the ramp, we know that, and we're gonna pay for that.
Yeah, well, there's all the lists there.
And whatnot. I'm just saying, but, and.
Bathrooms?
Well, now, the bathrooms is a big thing. That's the one big thing, is them, is the bathrooms.
Yeah. And when you look at all of this stuff to make it.
It's today.
I know it, I can't read it, but you have to read it. I could tell her a lot of things there, it's gotta be done.
I, you know, some of the. I'm saying spandles and, and, and.
But some of the big things were with the fire code and the way the doors swing and, and having it so that it is, you know, so that people can go in it, uh, the way the doors swing and, and the thresholds, and I think Andrea has gone through and made a list of, of the different things for it to actually be compliant that are gonna have to be addressed before it can be opened up. So Andrea probably has a list also.
I think she does.
Andrea, she had a list, and it's the biggest.
I don't understand that door business. When the one up at, uh, whatever that is, Belle Meade, what is it, up, go, um, Roval Quaid?
Yeah, Belmont, yeah, Belmont.
Belmont. Theirs don't. Theirs open just like this right here.
I know, that was just some of my notes that, you know.
I know, I know, but I don't know why.
The fire chief, and my notes say Tam, which would be Tamra, the fire chief, and Andrea too, and that there's a problem with the way the doors swing, something about the fire code.
Well, I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are gonna have to be addressed.
I know a business right here in Hamilton that's got doors like that.
Those are original.
Well, we're not arguing with you.
I mean, I, I'm just saying, I don't know, that is a historical deal, and you can't change them doors and whatnot and make them do the other way. Make them work, cause see, those doors open in and whatnot. The screen doors were on the outside and whatnot, and if Belle Meade can do it and whatever, as, it's, it's not something that people are living in. It just opened occasionally and whatnot, so I just don't know why that, that, there's not an exception somewhere along the line for historical buildings. That's what I can't figure out.
Guess that'd be a question for the fire chief. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know, I just, there's a, there's a lot of things, you know, just on this little list that I made, and, and the list that Mr. Moore had, I mean, it was typed, and it was a, it was a whole page.
I'll get a copy of that list.
Yeah, this is a bunch of stuff. That's what I'm getting at. It's a lot of stuff.
I would like to say that I enjoyed my visit with you guys.
We'd like to say that's all finished.
In October, I had a good time over there, me and Billy Bowlin and a bunch of those folks that got our history lesson. Now, if you don't think you can get a history lesson, sit down and talk to this lady right there.
Oh, I know that.
My son loves to listen to her.
She's amazing. Those people she could talk about lived generations ago almost, and it, it was amazing. And she knows the ins and outs of it, and I love it, Miss Willie, when you talk about the history of Hamilton.
Thank you. Thank you.
But we're gonna put some good effort on this. Y'all do, y'all do a little homework. Let's meet again, okay?
All right, all right.
Let's promise it says we'll have another sit-to, okay?
We, we need to find that list and get the work on.
I, I'm gonna dig mine out too. I got, I got that list.
Oh, they said he had one.
I think I'm gonna go to Belle Meade during Christmas. I'm gonna make some pictures.
Turn them in.
No, no. They're up there, Corden, they've, they've get, they've, there's an exception somewhere in whatever for historical buildings. I'll guarantee you, there is somewhere, somebody can find it.
That's what I thought when all this stuff came up before, that you could.
I think the old bank building downtown's door swing to the inside.
What now?
The old bank building, the, Derry County Banky, over in there on the corner.
Oh. Well, of course they do.
I think that's one of the inside.
Yeah, that's two then.
The difference may be the city doesn't own them, and the city owns
owns this other.
The, the other house, and that, and that may be the whole catch, because, you know, there's different rules for private property and.
Well, and the fact that there's nobody living in this house is another one. I mean, I'm just saying for not changing doors, cause when the, it's open house and whatnot, those doors are wide open and whatnot. People can come and go and.
We had to reverse the front door of this building as an out-only door, and the reason for it is it, it meets fire code.
I understand that. I understand that, right, right.
You push and you go right out, and you don't have to bring it back in. When you push it, it goes out and you go out the door. And, and it, and it is a code thing. It really is.
I understand that. I bet you, if you, if you had a fire and whatnot, you could put your foot through that door, can't you?
Wouldn't have to worry about it, would you?
Wouldn't have to worry about it.
I know if I was, you wouldn't have to.
That's right.
It wouldn't take long to reach the door and it's a captain.
That's right, that's right.
Get out.
All right.
Unique building. Uh, but we thank you for your visit. We're, we're gonna try to do better on our, our end and, and get this thing ironed out.
But we got to have that list.
Yeah, I'll find it and I'll, I'll bring it to our next work session.
Bob, if Bob had one, I'll get one from him. I'll work on that.
The, uh, Methodist Church street matter, we put that off at the, at the last vote, because we've had some questions on the road. Now, Scott Hunt had gone down and done some tape measuring for us, and then I've had Mike to follow up on the logistics of that, the way it lays out. He's got the ideas of, of what he thinks we need to do as our street superintendent, so I want him to talk to that issue at this town.
So what, what we've got down there is two right, we got a twenty-foot right-of-way. That's the street that goes parallel to the playground.
Now, what is that, from the building up to the fence?
We have a twenty-foot right-of-way. From the road bed, wait, you can't, see, sometimes you have a, you have a twenty-foot right-of-way. If the road bed is all the way to one side of the right-of-way, so you may have zero land on one side and four feet on the, or ever how many feet on the other side. You follow what I'm saying?
Huh.
It's not twenty feet from the center line?
It's, right. It's not twenty fi- twenty feet from the center line.
So it's twenty feet from where?
Yeah, where do you start that twenty feet down there? At the front of the buildings or?
You mainly just need to look at the map, but it's, assuming it's the center of the right-of-way, the center of the road is
Okay, so.
Ten foot on each side.
Okay.
Assuming that. I don't know that for a fact, because it don't show that on the map.
And our normal streets are what, sixteen?
Sixteen feet. So you got a sixteen-foot road down there already. So possibly, you might can move over four feet, which would still not be to the fence, and that's all the right-of-way we've got. Uh, so I guess my suggestion would be just leave it like it is, and if it becomes a problem, then address it at that point. You got two utility poles you're gonna have to move, and then, uh, and then possibly move, move the road over another, a foot or so.
Yeah, now, but when we leave it the way it is, and we give them that forty foot or whatever it is up there.
Right.
And we come back, not us, somebody comes back later and says, this road's not wide enough. We don't wanna move up on y'all five or six feet.
Who's to say the roads are not wide enough? It's sixteen feet.
But can two car, all right, let me ask you.
We got, we got off, streets all over town that are sixteen feet wide, everywhere.
Let me ask you this. When you park the car in there in front of those buildings, you say there's sixteen feet left?
No.
But, see?
We can't, unless you wanna take some over there in front of those buildings, that's Mr. Nichols' property. We don't have any property on that side to take.
No, that's what I mean. That's what I mean. But if you're gonna, we're gonna put a street down through there and have it where they can park, they're gonna be parking in there. They got to have parking in front of the buildings there. That's what I'm saying.
So you wanna give him part of our street?
Who?
Parking for the shopping center.
Does, doesn't he, does he not own parking in front of his building?
He does, but it, it.
Is part of his parking the right-of-way?
No.
Okay, okay, so none of the parking's the right-of-way. All the parking is private property. No right-of-way. We don't have.
Well, it all depends on where your corner is.
Okay.
Yeah. We've got twenty feet to play with right there. That's all we've got.
Are we talking about from the front of the buildings, the twenty feet?
No, no. There's parking space there in front of his building, the very north end of his building there. There's parking space there.
What, how far?
And then you start sixteen feet of roadway, and then you got about eight or ten feet from the roadway to the fence. I really don't see a reason to, to do anything to the road myself. You've got sixteen feet, you've got, you've got a, uh, the other road going east and west, which is Second Street or Second Avenue, is the same width, but you got a, you've got a, a, a forty-foot right-of-way there.
Well, Mike, what I'm saying is this, now, and I'm not saying tomorrow, the next day, or next year, I'm saying the future. We don't know what's gonna happen to that, uh, shopping center. We don't know, you know, but anyway, if it, it becomes a shopping center, which it probably will, but we're gonna have that road, the only roads we're gonna have coming into that shopping center is those off of that highway going to Hay, when we give the church that right-of-way coming in there. We, the only roads we're gonna. We, the only roads we're gonna have is those.
Which is a fifty foot, which is fifty feet.
Anybody wanting to go to Hackleburg on Highway forty-three, is gonna have to come out of that shopping center and go all the way up to the red light to turn to go to Hackleburg.
Sure.
And cross all that traffic, when we've got a street.
They should do, Jean.
No. When we've got, wha- what's wrong with the street we've got down through there, if we widen it?
When you get Hamilton. I don't think there'll be that much traffic on it, Jean.
Have you been down?
I'm not trying to argue.
I know, but, but what I'm saying is this, I know it's not gonna, but for the future, in my time, probably not. But one of these days, you're gonna need that road down through there, and if you're gonna give away forty or fifty feet up here, they should be willing to give you ten feet down there and have that for later on for the future to make that road wider, so people can get out. They want that, they want our fifty, forty or fifty feet up there.
We can send the Baptist church forty or fifty foot.
And we're gonna give that to them, right, they should be, give us eight or ten feet extra down there.
So we're gonna, we're gonna ask the Baptist church to give us, give us eight or ten foot somewhere else.
Huh?
Are we gonna ask the Baptist church to give us eight or ten foot?
We don't need any from them, if we need it, yes, that's not it, it's not, it's not whether if we need it, yes, if we needed fifty feet, I'd say the Baptist church oughta give it to us. But we don't need it, and we don't really need that road that goes across there, when we got a road going up each side, it's plenty wide enough. And that, that's the only, only thing I'm saying.
My whole point, Jean, is that if you're turning in off forty-three on Second Avenue, you've got a, you've got about sixteen foot road there. Why do we need a sixteen foot road there and then turn into twenty or thirty foot road? It's not gonna, it's not gonna help you. The only thing it did, the, the, the only thing it might help is the parking for the, for them.
Businesses, yeah.
But they don't own that property. They don't own the road.
They don't own any, they don't own any parking in front of those buildings?
He does, which evidently when he built the building was sufficient for him.
I, I.
We're friends, Jean, I'm not trying to be arguing with you.
I know that, but I'm, I'm talking about now, and I, and you know, I'm talking about the future. You can't drive down through there with people parked up in there two cars can't meet.
Why does that become the city's problem? Cause they don't have adequate parking, is my one, why? Why do we need to invest in moving a roadway over to, so he has parking on his property? Which would basically be, he'd be using part of our property for his parking.
You just got through saying he had parking for his property.
There's, there's.
Well, we, I don't see, I go down, I don't see where there's enough space left, if you park, if I park my car in there, enough space left for two cars to meet going down through there, if they do, there won't be that much room left to that fence there, going down through there, all I'm saying is this, they may not wanna do it now, but I'm saying for and I'm not for, saying for Pete, but if it's my business down through there, and I, I'd hate for the city to give away what they're giving away up there and not get eight or ten feet there for the future if they need it. And if you don't get it now while you're trading, just trade it, cause they want that, that connects their playground and all with the other, and I want them to have it. But I also don't wanna people coming in there that has to go all the way back and go around to go to Hackleburg and not have a way to go down through there. And you'd be surprised how much stuff there are going down through there.
I would be surprised.
Yeah, I know, now you would be.
Cause I, I'm through there a lot and I don't ever see, I mean, I see a few people parked up there in front of the beauty shop. And I see a few people parked up there at the restaurant, which is they park on all the way.
Well, why would you not, though, why would you, ma- why would you not wanna, you know, do some trading now? And what, you don't have to do anything now, just have it there for the future, eight or ten feet left there, and then when all of that, we find out what all is gonna be down there, we don't know yet.
Well, I was just trying, trying to think of it as a, to be fair to both churches.
And what we might need to do is, and this is just, you know, Mike's thinking, oh, Lord. What we might need to consider doing is closing that hill, just the top part up there and just seeing how much traffic is coming down through, because I've noticed in the mornings on the hill beside the church, they line up down that hill and then across to come into the old shopping center, to the old Wayne Riggs building to drop off. So all that morning traffic is gonna be diverted, I'm assuming, since that's the way they're coming in, to the subdivision road, and so that's gonna put them coming down the subdivision road, turning in, lining up all down that road and then turning in, so it might need, that we might need to do a little study, a little look see, and then decide how to handle that road based on the amount of traffic that's actually there when the road's closed, does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
What you're saying, but I, I still believe.
And you may be right, I don't know.
Yeah, you may be right, but I'm.
We might just need to go have a field trip and let Jean park in front of the, the stores like he does and put two cars on the road and see, see what you do.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right, but six, eight to ten feet there, moving that fence up is not gonna bother the Methodist church. That's a playground there, isn't it, best I remember?
Yes.
Eight or ten feet moving that up, then for the future, or whatever they do at that shopping center.
Move it over, eight or ten feet.
Yeah.
And not touch their feet, not touch their fence.
Yeah, we got enough room to move it now, eight feet or more.
You mean they own, they own, they own eight or ten feet on this side of the fence?
Well, there's, there's a twenty foot right of way there, Jean, we're taking sixteen feet of it. So there's another four feet towards the fence, and then there's another four feet that they own there. This, they're backed off of the line there with their fence.
Four feet?
Approximately, yeah, yeah.
But we go down.
I mean, all I, all I can tell you is there's a twenty foot right of way there, and we've got a sixteen foot road in it. And it's, I'm assuming if, if the road's all the way towards Pete, then we've got four feet, and then there's another four feet or so past our right of way towards their fence that we're not touching. But when you do a road bed now, it's gonna have to be ditched on one side, uh, so, you know.
To carry the water.
To carry the water out, yeah, and then you go.
Where's the water going now?
It's going in that ditch, and it goes down to the corner and cuts across down there in front of Pete's.
There's a ditch up there now by the fence?
A slop, small ditch.
Yeah, well, very small, small enough I've never saw it.
Right.
But if it rained any much, you'd have the old floor coming down in there, but I, I, I'm just saying.
Some cover that goes.
This has nothing to do with me personally, I'm gonna be gone, but I wanna be sure while we're doing this and we've got, that, that is done right down there, to where it's wide enough for two people to meet and them people to park in front of those buildings.
There's plenty of, there's two, there's plenty of room for two cars to meet on the ru- on our.
After you park in.
On our road.
After you park in the front of those buildings. All right.
I think so.
Yeah, I think you're thinking, yeah, but you haven't measured it like me either, and it's gonna be rubbing when they come down through there, I go down there every two weeks and get a haircut, but what I, that's what I'm saying, this buildings are sitting right here. And it's not gonna hurt anybody, is the thing about it, cause all they got out there is a playground, eight or ten feet, I'd give it to, in a minute is mine.
Well, then we should ask the Baptist church for part of their parking lot.
What?
Or part of their corner over there, to be fair about it, I think.
Yeah, well, that's what, somebody's supposed to go and ask them.
But we didn't do that.
I asked some people to, ask you to go over there and talk to them and see if they'd be willing to give us eight or ten feet there.
You're talking about the, I'm talking about the Baptist.
That's what I'm talking about.
You didn't ask me to go ask them.
Well, I did, some of them I did, I mentioned it too, I said, now, we, we're gonna need to widen it, we need to talk to them and tell them we'll give them that up there if they'll give us this, whatever footage it takes to make a road down through there. And my understanding was, look, somebody talked to them and they said, they would, there wouldn't be no problem.
You're talking about the Methodist church?
Yeah, I'm talking about, I ain't talking no about the Baptist, I'm talking about the Methodist church.
Yeah, yeah, I, I did talk to them about it.
Yeah, and they said it wouldn't be no problem.
Well, it's not, but you're, now you're wanting to put a road in there.
Well, what do you think I wanted to begin with? To, what, why would they even say anything about it for them to widen the darn road? Nobody cared.
The road is fine, Jean, is my point, that's the point I'm trying to make, that the road, we've got a sixteen foot road there, there's no need to widen it.
For two cars to meet.
For two cars, we got sixteen foot streets all over Hamilton.
Alright.
And two cars.
Alright, this is their, alright, this is their building down through here, alright, they've got parking.
The argument was that bucket trucks couldn't meet on that road, was the argument.
Now, you're, you're talking about Pete owns that parking out to here, in front of his building, and the fence is right down through here. Now, alright, what we're saying is this, now, this is the building, this is Pete's parking.
Yeah, let me, let me draw it, let me draw it. Well, because you got the building running parallel to the road, and it don't. The road comes down like this, his building is more like that.
Well, you, you're getting closer down here, then you sure gonna have to have the footage down to get a road down.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying there's probably parking right there.
Yep, parallel, parallel parking, but how, if somebody's parked there, how's the car's gonna get up and down through there?
Well, I'm not gonna argue about it anymore.
I mean, how they gonna, how they gonna get out of there?
And then y'all, y'all can decide it, I'm not, I'm just saying, we're gonna spend money on building a road, I think.
We're not gonna build a road, I didn't say build a road now, I said, make a deal with the church that if the city ever needs to build a road, to widen that road down through there, I don't wanna have to widen it now, but we need it, the traffic's not there, but I'm looking at the future. You're sure not gonna get it in the future if they go and, so, so that they couldn't build it down through there.
Possibly cut this corner off, you, you know, maybe cut this corner right here off.
Yeah, cause probably that's, that's not, at the playground, that's not gonna, but. No, I'm not, I'm not, all I'm doing setting on this city council is one thing right now. We not gonna get a whole lot done in four years, as everybody knows, we're getting everything we can. But we're looking, most everything we're doing, we're looking to the future of Hamilton, you saw that's road in the last what, three or four or five years, you can't get on down this road out here, that's just bunker to bunker. And when you go do something like this, and you cut this old boy here off completely, and when they park here and one car's all gonna get up and down through there, well, you're hurting him. And when, they got all kinds of room over here on, and we're giving them, if I had it, I'd been glad to give them a few feet down through there to get all of that, and that, in other words, too, that joins their church with their playground, without cars coming down through there with kids trying to run across it, the road. I don't want no arguments with the church now, don't.
Well, I don't either, I mean, that's why. And that's what I'm trying to hold it, I just can't see how you can ask one church to give, give you something and not ask the, the other church to do the same.
Well, what can the church up there give us? We don't need nothing from the other one. But we need, we do need here, you got, if you had this business right here, I tell you one darn thing, you wouldn't be sitting there talking the way you are if you had a business in there and didn't have, I have no way of getting into it. And I, I'd be a lot, and I don't have a business there, but I, like I say, I'm, I'm just asking that for the future, it should be where they could get up and down there, but I'm sure he's got a lot of money invested in those bu- buildings there. Anyway, I just, I go down there and get a haircut, you can't get up and down there if they park. But I never have, I, I haven't saw where it was that narrow.
About, uh, I've had Scott, um, to look at this and.
Well, talk to the church now, I don't think they'd be.
And I'll, I'll get him to go with me and meet, um, their chairman and, and their pastor.
Yeah.
And I'll report back to y'all what they'll say about it, and if they're willing to concede some things. And, um, you're saying there's probably the expense of moving two utility poles and then building a new road bed is what you think would be into, if we move it over?
Yeah, you'd probably have to rework that.
And a ditch.
The north end down there, put a new covert in to carry the water from down there.
Alright, uh, what does council want me to ask for in the way of footage? And from which directions of their property, we wanna take it up two sides, or we wanna take it up just one side?
Well, you just want enough room for two cars to meet and go out, he's got it drawn up, I haven't been down, I don't know. He says it goes like that and it's real wide here, but I, I, I think it's about the same along here down, I, I park in there to the leak, but again, I say this.
There's a lot more parking in front of this beauty shop.
Yeah.
And the restaurant than there is on.
On their far end.
On that far end.
Yeah, see, I haven't been down there, I can't, I can't hardly look at it, I haven't been down there, but, uh, still.
I'll, I'll make a point to, uh, to see, um, to their people, their heads, their, their official boards, and, and I'll have Scott with me and we'll report back to you guys. Uh, we wanna hold off one more meeting about voting.
Well, how do the rest of y'all feel about it? I mean, I'm, I can shut up, I'm, I'm just looking at the future, not, not now, you know.
I, I got, I, I got Scott to go down there with his tape measure and measure, and he had the same concept that Mike did. It's adequate for parking and, and maneuvering vehicles. Um, he brought the report back to me first before I ever talked to Mike, he said, I don't think we need to do anything at this point. I think there's enough space already there.
At this point, now see, I'm not talking about at this point, I'm talking about the future. You may be enough space there for now, because you don't have the traffic, but you're gonna have the traffic there when that shopping center's developed, you're sure not gonna have the traffic, when anything's going north is gonna go down through there, which they do now, I guess, some of them.
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to the Methodist about it and, and give y'all a report.
And you might ask the school if they would have their parents to go that way for a few mornings and just see get, get an idea of how it's gonna work and get some feedback from them, because.
About the ramp school?
The, the, yes, their younger school, their.
The daycare thing there?
Well, it's their school, it's up through, yeah, right, it's like their fifth or sixth grade. And they're the ones that line up down the hill at the Methodist church to come into the, uh, shopping center. The old Wayne Riggs building there to drop off, so they, you might get with them and ask them to have their parents come in through the subdivision and then make that turn and come down, and like, they're gonna have to maneuver if that road's closed. And let them give us a feedback as to how much trouble they're having and if they're.
Why would they not go down to the, why would they not come in and go down behind the Methodist church and go in there? I mean, that's, that's a fifty foot road there.
Come on, it's a little road behind it, you ever tried to make that turn coming from the main road line?
And you can't turn left, well, if you turn left into it, there's no turning lane, if you're, if you're going, uh.
Why not turn into shopping center parking lot and go straight to the building?
I think the.
There's three or four ways to get in there, and we're, and we're facing over a sixteen foot turn.
Right, I don't know how they drop off, but I have seen the cones, and I'm assuming it's one way in and one way out. You know, they come in from the north end and then exit out the south end of the parking lot, at the shopping center exit.
So the people out on two seventy-eight come up to the red light, turn right, and go down the, go down the hill.
Now, I've never done it, I've just seen, you know how they're lined up, and it looks like it's one way in, it's a flow, you know, that's their pattern. And I may be wrong, they may be going the other way, but I have noticed the cars lined up, and that would, you know, that would make sense that they would drop off in a one-way pattern for the safety of the kids, you know, everybody's going the same way. So it might be worth it to talk with them and see, you know, how that's gonna, how much traffic that's gonna put there on the turn to know if the corner needs to be.
Well, see, they're not gonna be able to turn in there no more on, behind the Methodist church.
This is down, I'm saying.
Door to Hackaway, will they ask them?
Send them down to the subdivision turn.
Close it, and the only way they can get is to cross all of them lanes to get across there. They can't go in like they've been going in, behind, you know, going toward Hackaway and turning in is where they've been going.
Right.
See, that road, that's gonna be given to the church and that's gonna be closed. So the only way they're gonna be able to get in now is to head toward Haley and cut out.
That's just a suggestion.
Well, I, only suggestion I've got is, is if they would, uh, not do anything. Well, I, only suggestion I've got is, is if they would, uh, not do anything now, but sign that they would, if they ever got ready to build that road back there, give the eight or ten feet, you know, leading to it. I'm not saying do it now. I'm, cause, for me, really, probably not use that much now. But, you know, and I know, in the future, if that shopping center ever, it will be, and especially with that road up there closed, cause anything coming from forty-three is gonna have to go all the way to the red light and go down. And if they could have a street going back through there, they could get on it just wrong.
We'll, we'll do some more homework. Um, um, we obviously wanna make the right decision.
Well, I'm not, now, y'all, yep, it's, I'm, I'm just a jet, I, right now, and y'all can, and that's the way I feel about it, and I know it won't hurt the church a bit. I mean, all it would do to the church would be eight or ten feet, and they're getting forty feet up there. I'd trade that way every day, wouldn't you?
I always like to trade when I'm ahead.
I mean, that would be, and it was my understanding that they, they didn't have a, any objections to it, to giving them some more foot if it's needed down through there, but.
Well, I, but, but I, you know, I keep speaking for them, but I think they would probably be willing to do that if it's necessary.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If it's not necessary now, we, we don't care nothing about going in there and building a street now, if, until we find out what happens with the rest of it down there, you know. But if they would just say, you know, they, if they put and writing, they would give it if it's ever needed.
We might go down there and survey it.
Yeah, and.
And, and realize, you know, we own more one, one way or the other than we actually, where the corners are.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying, is this for the future, cause, that's gonna be, when you think about it, that would be a good way to get to Hackaway, when they close up our little street, see. Cause the only way you can go to Hackaway, come from Haley, is gonna be go up to the red light turn.
Okay, we'll, we'll do some more homework on that, and, and we'll meet again.
Thank you, Mike. You called me, you'll talk some more.
We'll come get you and take you down.
No, no, I don't wanna get you. I don't want you to get me out here by yourself. I'm about forty years past that.
My brother, we're proud to have Wade with us today.
Wade, that's first time.
It's just that I'm afraid to.
Wade'll have an inauguration just for our meeting, so he can be official at our meeting, uh, and that'll be seven o'clock.
Now, Wade didn't vote to change that, so it's six o'clock.
I know, we talked about it enough, I think we're gonna try to get by with it.
Well, we'll have to get clear to Scott before I, I mean, because we did talk about it, but we never voted on it.
Our parade's at six, Gene, and, and we was wanting to meet at seven.
But we didn't vote on it to change it.
Didn't ever bring it to a vote. We discussed it, but I don't think.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I thought we did.
Well, we were gonna come back to it, and I'll, look at, look at me, I, I give.
What are we talking about, this coming Monday?
Yeah.
And we're gonna meet at seven?
Well, we wanted to.
But, oh, I don't care. Matter of me, I'm not, you're gonna be the parade. For you? You pregnant?
She'll probably have children in the parade.
If we're meeting at six o'clock, I've missed the parade before. We've had public hearings during the parade, we've had meetings during the parade, so if we're having a meeting, I'll miss the parade.
Me too.
I want you to go to the parade, Tammy. I really, because I think you should be there with your children, and I know you're gonna act your children and that, probably.
She wants an excuse.
But you, but you care about the children enough to be there.
I do, but.
I know you're loyal to your job and your position, and, and I, I can appreciate that, but I think you should go. And I think we all should go, can. We're having a tree lighting ceremony tomorrow night at five-thirty here. Uh, it's an outside event, so if you come, bring your chair. We got a forty-potty for the folks to use, should they get in the tight. And we're gonna have tree lighting, we're gonna have a lot of fun and a lot of music. And it's an outside event, and, uh, I hope y'all can be here. I'd like for us to be thinking about what we wanna do in nineteen, as, as a city councilman and mayor together. Uh, some of the things y'all think we ought to accomplish in nineteen, it's a bonus. Want us to think more about this LED lighting from Alabama Power, that plan two sounded real appealing to me, I think it would make our city look much better to have uniform lighting throughout, and.
They just, you need to get with them and get from them where the lights are going to be. And I told y'all where you could go look at them before, what they proposed, but, um, we'll be getting sixty-nine of one strength and five hundred and forty-five of another, so I wanna know where those sixty-nine are gonna be. If they're gonna put them all together, or if they're gonna be scattered randomly like they are now.
We're gonna bring them back to explain that to us.
Because, um, right now, there's, uh, there's three in a row right up here at the shopper's value, and then it goes to the lesser strength, and they're just scattered everywhere, so I wanna know if they're gonna put those sixty-nine all together and where, or if they're gonna be randomly dispersed like they are now.
We need those answers, and I agree. Uh, Rodney has a presentation for the next few minutes, and, and we're gonna try to get out of here on top. The annexation of Harper's Junction, it's changed hands, I understand, man's here. I understand, maybe they've approached the legislature to, uh, act on this, and have it got maybe that response. Uh, the citizens up there toward Harper's Junction said they'd rather not be in the city. We denied that before, or y'all still in that mode? Is that how you're thinking now? Are you gonna rethink that, or? He's called me today and asked me to consider annexing all but Harper's Junction into the city.
The way I understand it, it has to be contiguous, or it has to come from Montgomery, so if they don't want in, we can't make them in, and if I didn't want in, I wouldn't get in.
Okay. Well, we're, it's in a discussion now, about some folks wanting out of the city, and that, that was in the paper this week. Uh, they had two free discussions about, it's, it's a real unpleasant subject, and somebody wants out, so I don't wanna take anybody in against their wishes, don't want anybody to annex out either. And, you know, that's just one of those situations that comes up sometimes. Annexation, we got a lot of property to take care of already. And, if you're going up there and taking somebody and don't wanna be in to start with, I think you just make a mess, and I just don't say we can reach out to Harper's Junction.
Only way they, only reason they want it is so they sell beer.
Sure.
That's the only reason they want it.
Sure. There's a store up there that would like to be, uh, selling alcohol right now, they're not eligible to sell alcohol, and getting into city limits would be their only solution for that.
And that's, and.
That was a request today, and, and, and act from the legislature's only way I see that could happen, and that's just the way I'm thinking.
So, do they need another vote so they can go back to Montgomery since it's changed hands?
It's a good question.
And I mean, if they need another vote, if that's. Or I don't.
It's a good question. I, I, I didn't get a chance to call the man, I've been videoing the last two days with our people that's doing our city videos, on chamber videos for our city. And I've been out with the cameraman two days in a row in this cold wind, and we've been everywhere you can imagine. And, uh, that's gonna be a beautiful project, by the way, and it's gonna be a, a day of divorce. So far, no expense to the city. And we won't be any expense to the city.
To what?
Advertisers will pay for it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, Rodney. Uh, Rodney and I have talked, and he's talked, and he's been working and studying, and, uh, we're thinking about the possibility going forward, a future of our sewer and water. This is, this is coming from superintendent's thoughts.
Oh, I, y'all, up to date from the last meeting we had, uh, I talked, we talked about, uh, how that, uh, when Alec presented our budgets and everything, about the deficit the sewer department had been in, how much money is sewer lost, you know, loses every year, which. Uh, of course, I, I, I told you at the last meeting, you could ask any municipality in the state, and they'll tell you they lose money on sewer. You just can't charge enough money to make up to pay for itself, because, number one, the amount of customers we have on sewer. Uh, number two, the utilities are actually more, the power bills more to sewer plant that is at the water plant every month. I mean, there's just a lot of factors goes into play from how much money you can make, or how much you're gonna lose on sewer.
It's not what you're gonna lose.
How much you're gonna lose on sewer. Oh, and I did some research, uh, I've, I've checked with other municipalities to see what they do, how they charge for sewer. Everybody does it different. Uh, I think I, what I oversaw with y'all at the last meeting, uh, Solid charges sixty percent for regular customers and seventy percent commercial. Haley charges sixty percent residential, ninety percent commercial. Uh, Winfield charges a hundred percent sewer. Of whatever your water bill is, you pay that much in sewer. And, and I, I kinda done some figuring, and tried to come up with some different things. Uh, what, what I would suggest on the, on the sewer, right now, we charge fifty percent of whatever your water is, that's what the sewer runs on your bill, the people that's on sewer. We have about thirty-five hundred customers on water. We have eleven hundred and sixty-nine, I believe, on sewer. So, we, I mean, there's a lot less customers on sewer than you are on water. Uh.
How many did you say on water?
Water, about thirty-five hundred customers. Uh, my, my proposal would be, like I said, right now, we're at fifty percent of whatever the water bill is, fifty percent is, is what the sewer bill is. My thinking would be to go to, on residential. Uh, right now, it's fifty percent across the board. Uh, the only difference that we ever charge in sewer right now is if they use over fifty thousand gallons of water, the base rate goes up on sewer. Of course, nobody hardly ever uses fifty thousand gallons of water in a month. But, that's, that's a, a thing we have built in for commercial or industry, that they pay, they a little, little more on sewer. But, if we go this route, we would, what I, what I would suggest is go from fifty percent on sewer, on residential, go from fifty percent to sixty percent. On commercial, go to eighty percent of whatever the water is, it'd be eighty percent would be the sewer cost. That would generate money back into, on the sewer part. Uh, I didn't break it down to see exactly how many commercial business, or how many businesses we have on sewer. I haven't done that yet. But I, I will, I'm going to, to, to get an exact total. I did, at the last meeting, I talked about, if you went up sixty percent across the board, to, from fifty percent to sixty, you would generate about, uh, in a year's time, now this is a average number of seventy-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars twenty-four cents in a year's time. That, that would be the, the extra you would generate from fifty to sixty percent. If you went to eighty percent, now this is across the board, it would be about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars extra a year you would bring in for the sewer.
But you're talking about if we go up to ten percent, sixty percent, they'd bring in seventy-one thousand dollars?
Well, that's across the board, if you, that's commercial and residential.
Yeah.
It would bring in seventy-one thousand. But if you went sixty on residential and eighty on commercial, it's gonna bring in more than that. It's probably be, I was saying a one thirty to one fifty, one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty thousand. That's my.
Would that break us even?
Still, I'm probably bringing even on sewer, but it's gonna, it's gonna get us up where we're not losing so much. I mean, it's.
How much do you say it'd bring in on the commercial, the eighty percent?
Uh.
If we went to.
Well, I don't have it, I don't have it broken down with commercial versus residential. I, I wanna get those numbers actually in place. To figure out exactly how much it would be.
And that's your recommendation on the sewer. Now, what, what was your thinking on the water?
On the water, we, we talked about that also. Uh, a, a lot of systems, most of the systems do an annual in, one percent increase on the water. That, that's every year it's built into their system where, I mean, you don't even have to vote on it, it's, it's, it's put into place annually. Every first of the year, there's one or two percent increase in water rates. Once you vote on that to do that, so you do it now for the start of the year, uh, if you put it in there annually, it's just gonna one percent increase every January. And that, all that's doing is covering your, your rising cost of chemicals, basically. If we did a one percent increase on water, now this is, again, this is average numbers using the October eighteenth month. Uh, if you did a one percent increase, it's gonna bring in an extra total of one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars fifty-seven cents a month. That multiplied by twelve per year, you'd bring in an extra sixteen thousand one seventy-eighty-four. That's based on October rates, or billing, because, you know, months change. I used October because it's an average month. You're gonna be up some in, in the summer months, in July and August, and there are people using more water, watering grass, stuff like that. But October's a kind of a base average month to go by. Uh, and I even went back and, and pulled, well, I looked, I took a minimum water bill, which right now is twenty-one twenty. That's a minimum wat, just water bill, okay? If you went up one percent, that's twenty-one cents, it's gonna go up a month on a, on a two, zero to two thousand bill. A minimum bill is gonna go up twenty-one cents a month.
If you add what to it?
If you add a one percent increase.
If you annualize that, eventually, it can help you, it'll be a few years before it really shows up in numbers. It'll help you cover some of the costs.
Twenty-four cents, do you say?
Twenty-one cents. You take twenty-one twenty and multiply it ten, or one percent, and it's twenty-one cents.
Sewer's where we're losing so much money.
Right.
This probably, the numbers he's playing with is gonna get us down to where we're gonna have to supplement the water department about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And we've been given lots more than that. That would really be a help to us, and it wouldn't hurt the customers.
It's not gonna hurt the customer that bad. I went, I even went as far as, as doing an increase on a, on the water rates one percent, which would bring it from twenty, twenty-one twenty to twenty-one forty-one. Then I did a, on a residential, if we went up to sixty percent on the sewer bill, that would bring, right now, your sewer is ten dollars and nineteen cents, because that's half of the twenty-one twenty. Okay? If you went to twenty-one forty-one and went up to sixty percent on, on the sewer, it's just gonna bring it to get my numbers here straight before I say it. It's gonna bring it up to ten seventy-one and a dollar seven.
Are you talking about the sewer moving it to sixty percent?
Yeah.
You told us what, I think, seventy-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I'm talking about on a minimum bill.
Okay.
But I, I came up with a total, right now, at, at what we, what our rates are now, at twenty-one twenty on gar, on water, uh, ten nineteen on garbage, on sewer, and seventeen dollars on garbage. Our minimum bill right now is forty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. That's the minimum a customer pays that's on sewer. With these increases, that's gonna bring, bring it up from forty-eight thirty-nine to fifty dollars and nineteen cents.
That's on a minimum bill.
That's on a minimum bill.
Yeah.
It's not, that'd be good.
It's less than two dollars.
And how much water are you getting with that, it's twenty thousand gallons?
She wrote a two thousand gallons of water, minimum bill.
I want y'all to think about and consider this seriously, because I think it's something we really need to do. Rodney's been content to operate his department at a loss. And we've, he's waited patiently on us to make these adjustments, but he's, he's needing these adjustments to be made to get him closer to breakeven's point in his operation, and.
And you're gonna get us the numbers of how many residential and how many commercial on the sewer, so we can.
If you don't care, let's get that out to them in a, in their box or in an email, okay? So, they can give it serious consideration in the next couple of weeks. Thank y'all for coming today, I appreciate you very much. Y'all be thinking about nineteen.